Okay, can I have your attention, please? We're going to call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen for March 9th, 2015, to order. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Brandon and Anthony to come up over to the microphone here and lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could please stand. I'll face the flag with you guys and whenever you're ready.
Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First order of business will be approval of the minutes from February 23rd, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Onto communications and announcements. Our first one is we have a real honor tonight of recognizing our North Andover Booster Club wrestling team, undefeated wrestling team. They are both the Merrimack Valley and state championship wrestling team. So we have a number of them here tonight with us. Why don't you all stand up and... Just go around and say your names real quick.
Eli.
No.
Your meal.
He's there.
Loud, loud, loud.
He's there.
Last name's got it.
Joe Valamino.
Paul T. Fanny.
Paul Shaw.
Frank Society.
Ian Watson.
Hey, Jake.
Go ahead.
You're him.
You.
Sam.
Okay. All right. Oh, we've got more over here than anybody. Oh, yeah. Well, congratulations to all of you and... [applause] The next generation of a great wrestling history in North Andover and you guys are upholding that and just coming right along with that. So congratulations. And as you know, we had two state champ... no, New England champions this weekend from North Andover, right? Ian Butterfront and Fritz Haynes. And they all came for the same program you did. So maybe one of you guys would be next for that at the high school level. I know we've already got some New England champions in here at the Booster Club level, but you know, next is the high school level. So congratulations to all of you guys. And I mean, if I could have your coach come up? Steve? Marco Lotto?
Coach.
Yes.
Congratulations on behalf of the town of North Andover on your undefeated season and becoming the Merrimack Valley Conference Champions and the state champions for the 2014-2015 season. Your team's talent, dedication, and hard work are a true credit to yourself and to the town of North Andover. You guys represent us very well, so thank you all. Presented by the North Andover Board of Selectmen, March 9th, 2015. Thank you, sir. You guys are free to go and I'm sure there's pizza or something waiting for you somewhere. Maybe at Watson's house. Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.
Practice tomorrow.
Yeah, they practiced. And they all, and those who go to New England this weekend have to cut weight. And Cameron made fifth. Cameron, fifth in the state. Going to New England's next weekend.
That's fantastic. How fun is that?
It's awesome. Great group of boys. Unbelievable group of boys, too. Little gentlemen.
This could take a lot, sick all night to get them out.
I know, right?
Yeah. And then we have to get the firefighters all in.
Two people died one day.
Okay, well, thank you all. So we're going to give the firefighters a chance to come in. Oh, we still got people shuffling out. That really, that cleared the room, but I think we're going to fill it right back up again. So if we could have all the firefighters come in. I know. Wow. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, Sonny.
Well, we need the chief and he's out there, so...
Those are good things. You gotta...
Welcome, everybody. Just find a seat in the back there somewhere. You're all welcome to the front, too, if you'd like.
When you jump to your seat.
Hey, Sean. All right, I think we got everyone.
Best to come in and shut the door so that you don't get the outside noise.
Good morning, guys.
Those exist.
So one of the, one of the great privileges of doing this job is to be able to witness the swearing-in of our new police officers and firefighters. And tonight, we have two new firefighters that will be swearing in. So I'd like to invite Chief Milneke up to the podium here to give us a few words about these new firefighters and get to the swearing-in.
Good evening. I want to thank you for this opportunity. Tonight, we have two new firefighters who have completed their first year of probation. They have finished the fire academy, did very well. They will be excellent additions to the fire service, excellent additions to the North Andover Fire Service. I'd like to think it's continuing a trend we've set to hire high-quality individuals who can serve the townspeople better going forward. And so at this time, I'd like to ask Joyce Bradshaw to come up and swear in firefighters, Holland and Lundie.
Chris?
Anybody want to take pictures? Just come on up. Right to the front.
Okay. This is the best part of my job. I welcome you as a top employee. Wonderful, the best fire department in the world. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
Aye.
State your name.
Chris Holland.
Solemnly promise...
Solemnly promise.
And affirm...
And affirm.
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
Honestly...
Honestly.
Sincerely...
Sincerely.
And impartially...
And impartially.
Perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
That are incumbent...
That are incumbent.
Upon me...
Upon me.
As a firefighter...
As a firefighter.
For the town of North Andover...
For the town of North Andover.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Again, this is the best part of my job. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
Aye.
State your name.
Kevin Lundie.
Solemnly promise...
Solemnly promise.
And affirm...
And affirm.
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
Honestly...
Honestly.
Sincerely...
Sincerely.
And impartially...
And impartially.
Perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
That are incumbent...
That are incumbent.
Upon me...
Upon me.
As a firefighter...
As a firefighter.
For the town of North Andover...
For the town of North Andover.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. If you both want to just sign, your name's right there and then you'll get your badge. Okay. Right, right, man. Just skip over.
Sure.
Well, come out right here in the middle. Let's get you right out here in the middle so everyone can see the pinning. If you do, we've got to cover it though, given the people in the room.
A bunch of empty...
Chris and Kevin, good luck in your careers.
Thank you.
And thank you for being willing to serve the community of North Andover. We're happy to have you. Lucky to have you.
And be safe. Always the motto, be safe.
And I'm sure there's cake and pizza somewhere waiting for you guys, too. So what?
So you can leave.
Thank you very much for joining us and you're all free to go. Unless you want to stay, you can stay, too.
You've got a great meeting.
Oh, fantastic.
Okay. Next on, we'll move forward on the agenda. The next on the agenda, we have the FY16 Community Preservation Act requests, which we'll just hear briefly about tonight and we'll hear more about later on as the, as town meeting approaches. But manager?
Mr. Chairman, there were 14 requests submitted as part of the Community Preservation Act process totaling $4,759,905. Those requests cover the various categories, open space, historical preservation, affordable housing, and they've been forwarded to the CPC and John Simons, who will begin the process of deliberating over those requests and meeting with the various applicants and ultimately making a recommendation. And typically, shortly after the meeting in which that board makes its recommendation, Chairman Simon comes before the Board of Selectmen and communicates what the outcome was of those votes. So I'd expect that in the next couple of meetings or so.
Thank you. Any questions? Quite a number of projects, 14. So it'll be interesting to see what that, what we end up with when it all comes out to the final. Okay, well, thank you. Okay, next, in communications and announcements, I'll invite Mr. DeSalvo up, our town moderator. He has a petition to present for an article for town meeting.
Thank you. Good evening. I thought we were going to have an audience today, such as like...
I dismissed them all.
Appropriately so. They're very happy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the courtesy of putting me on the agenda. I appreciate it a great deal. My name is Mark DeSalvo. I live at 179 Coventry Lane. I'm the elected town moderator, for the record. I know that transparency and open government is important to each of you. And one of the most important ways and easiest ways of ensuring such openness is to, as simply as you are doing this evening, televise our meetings. And most, if not all, important committees in our community televise their meetings with the unfortunate exception in past years of the Finance Committee. It was the Board of Selectmen half dozen years ago, principally at the leadership of then-member Dan Lannan, who petitioned town meeting at that time in order to add the Town Finance Committee to the bylaw. That was defeated, I recollect reasonably closely at the time, because, for the most part, there was unanimous objection to it by the members of the Finance Committee. I'm pleased to report to you, as you may and the community may be aware, that the current Finance Committee has voted to televise its own meetings of its own volition. That's not an accident. It happened principally because I made it a condition of my appointments to those new people who were appointed to the Finance Committee. I did not make that demand of those people whom I reappointed. But I made the requirement that they support, at the time that the question came up, the opportunity to broadcast their meetings. Now that that objection has passed, meaning the current Finance Committee endorses and has been practicing that since October, to no diminution and to great comfort, very frankly, I considered how to ensure that future committees, in fact, always broadcast their meetings. I thought about filing a petition myself and/or a ten citizen petition, but wanted to respect the Board of Selectmen for their action in the past for carrying this forward. So with that, I ask humbly that you carry that petition forward in adding the three words "and" Finance Committee to the appropriate bylaw to ensure that future committees do what I'm very proud this current committee has done of its own. With that, I'm happy to ask your indulgence, your support, and answer any questions that you may have.
I think it's a good petition. I think it was the one, the one board that wasn't participating in it. And I think now that we have a board that's willing and we're happy with that, I think it's good. I think it's good that we kind of closed that loophole.
Clearly, it's the most important appointed board in our community and generally considered one of the three most important boards in the community among all elected and appointed boards, including this one and the School Committee. And it's only right and appropriate that the sensitive and important information that they discuss ought to be open in public and continue the hallmark of transparency and open governance that I know you support.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. So Mark, I mean, Mr. Moderator, it's the...
Mark works. It's all right. Thank you.
The vote.
Yes.
Do you know what the vote was as far as when the...
I recollect it as only being reasonably close. Rosemary, you were there at the time.
No, no, I apologize. The most recent vote...
Oh, yes. It was seven to two.
Seven to two, okay.
Yes.
So I think that would definitely help overwhelmingly pass a town meeting...
Yes.
If the full board or...
Yes.
A good majority of the board is behind it, so...
Without question.
The mechanics of putting it on the warrant, we have to make a motion or anything like that, or is it...
You just ask if you had an interest in doing it. You just instruct me to modify, present the warrant which included an article which modified 44-1 by adding "and" Finance Committee after the words "School Committee" in the current bylaw.
Very good.
I think it's a great idea. I thought it was a great idea about six years ago. I think it's a great idea tonight.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the prospect of your support.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Do we need a motion for that, or do we just...
I think, I think it makes sense. You'll eventually vote on the warrant, but it would be helpful in terms of giving me direction if you, if you made it as a form of a motion requesting that I include in the warrant an article which amends 44-1 by adding Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Four to one.
I used to sit on the Finance Committee. I have my reasons. I didn't support it last time and I guess I...
You're right to do so.
Yeah. I think that honestly, they've chosen to do it on their own. I think that should suffice. My concern is, I know the vote is over, but my concern after sitting on that board, sometimes there's information that I think some of the members want to ask but won't ask because of sensitivity of the cameras. For example, we used to meet with the heads of departments. I would use this as an example, police department. In those days, not so much these days, that there would be a request for more money to have more police officers on the road. And through the discussion, we would find out that we only had two police officers on at night. That's sensitive information that I don't think should be on camera, but anybody who wants to attend the meeting can hear it. Those were my reasons then, and I actually feel a little bit stronger now because the committee has decided on their own. Now they'll be forced to if a future committee decides that, you know what, we prefer not to have the cameras for reasons of public safety and others. That's my main reason. It's a tough one, because I'm a huge supporter of freedom of speech and open government. It's just in that area, I want my Finance Committee asking the tough, hard questions and not feeling at all. And I know the moderator has said to me, and thank you for the phone call and telling me that you'd be bringing this forward, that he does not feel that there's any inhibitions from this Finance Committee, and that's great. I just, they've decided to do it and I think that's great. If they decide in the future that, you know what, they want a little bit more hard-hitting and not have it on camera, I, I would support. I want them, they're the watchdog. I want them asking tough, hard questions without feeling, you know, pressure from the camera not being as forthcoming as... And I think we've felt that sometimes it's uncomfortable with the camera. That's my reason. But anyways, I'm sorry that...
So I, procedurally, I messed up. I didn't, I didn't ask for discussion between the vote and, and the second, so I, you know, I respect your comments.
Thanks for the leeway. No, I do appreciate that. That's all, because people would, I don't think they'd understand why I did, no. But thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
See you on the battlefield.
I can only make sure the second senior member, that, out of deference to you, Mr. Stewart, that no appointment of mine is going to be troubled by asking tough, hard questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Thank you. The next communication announcement I have is with respect to the winter parking ban. We have decided through input from the DPW and the Police Chief, given the conditions of the roads and the amount of snow we have out there, that we're going to extend that parking ban until our next meeting, which is the 23rd. However, we're going to reserve the right, if the conditions change and we get significant melting between now and then, to lift that parking ban. But right now, the roads are still very, very narrow, and if we stop parking on the streets, there's going to be certainly safety concerns with getting fire apparatus through and police and even just two cars passing at the same time. So we've decided to extend that parking ban until the 23rd. So that's that one. Do we have any other communications or announcements?
The only announcement I'd like to make, keeping with the theme of the, theme of the evening, is a huge congratulations to Fritz Hayne, who was, who won the New England Championship this weekend in his own house at North Andover High School and was also voted Outstanding Wrestler of the Tournament. For those of us who have been in town a long time, he comes from quite a wrestling dynasty, shall we say. His father Vaughn was a three-time state champion and a two-time New England. And for Fritz to finally win the New England's in his own home is unbelievable. I couldn't be prouder of him and wish him the best at Edinburgh next year.
That must have been so much fun.
It was crazy.
And there was also another North Andover wrestler...
Ian Butterbrot.
Right, who happens to wrestle at St. John's but went through the North Andover Program...
Went through the Booster Club and went through the Program and Ian Butterbrot won as well. And Ian, I believe, is going to Brown next year. He's going to Brown. And Fritz is going to Edinburgh and, and I have to say thank you to the community because they came out in droves. There was over 2,000 people at the high school for the championship. So New England's belong in Massachusetts. So it was great. Thank you and congratulations to all the wrestlers. It was good.
So I have just two events that are coming up. This coming Saturday, the North Andover firefighters are hosting their annual Irish Night over at the Relief's Inn in Lawrence. Tickets are $15 per person or you can purchase tables. I think you can get them through the North Andover Fire Department. Irish music, plenty of food, and a really good time, dancing.
At the Relief's Inn.
It's at the Relief's Inn in Lawrence, which is right over off of Salem Street in Lawrence. Used to be the old Knights of Columbus Hall in Lawrence. But I know tickets are available and it's usually a pretty fun time with the music. And then the other one is the Taste of North Andover is coming up on March 28th. I know there's still tickets available for that as well. You can go to the North Andover Youth Center website and purchase tickets directly online for that. That's coming up on the 28th. Any other?
Mr. Chairman, if I can, we, as, as the board knows, we've been communicating for a while, we are formally proceeding with the bus, commuter bus from Osgood Landing to downtown Boston.
We all going to go?
We're all going to go on the first day. Whoever's around, April 6th is the first day. We've got a lot of interest from residents and folks have been looking forward to it. We know that it's been less than reliable transportation into Boston over the last couple of months, so we have a lot of residents interested. It'll leave at 6:45 from Osgood Landing. It'll make multiple stops in downtown Boston and on the return trip, leave at 5 o'clock. Picking up at multiple spots in downtown Boston and returning here to Osgood Landing. There'll be, there'll be an additional bus that really is on a different route, but allow residents to return to Osgood Landing. If they miss the first bus, it'll be $5 each way. Parking is free. And so we'll begin to advertise that. I think it's a, it's both a low cost and efficient, no stops in the way there. You get on North Andover and you get to downtown Boston. So we think it's our first step toward expanding transportation opportunities, which is something that's been really a focal point to this board and we're hoping it's such a success, we need to ask for more parking space.
Yes.
Well, I'll tell you, we used to have it years ago and it was very, very successful.
I would say Michael's Park.
Yeah, and it was, I used to take it. It was fantastic. And to the financial district, it was fantastic. So, yeah.
Fingers crossed.
Well, thank you for all the effort you put in on that, too, to get that going. So thank you.
So you're, you're going in for a steak?
First day.
No, we're taking that first one, too?
Take the one back.
I have spoken to the property owner who said she will come ready with breakfast sandwiches.
Yes.
I'm going to the airport that day. Can you drop me off?
Yep.
We'll get you to the Blue Line. You can take the Blue Line down.
That is great.
It's great. It's fantastic.
Okay, let's move on to consent. I'm sorry, any other communications announcements from anybody? Okay, move on. Consent items. The first is a donation to the youth sports groups, from the North Andover Youth Sports Groups to the town athletic fields and facilities for $48,160, a pretty considerable donation that is given by each one of the major sports groups and, and youth sports groups in North Andover. I'll just read through the various groups. So the Soccer Association, $23,850. The Booster, North Andover Booster Club, $13,580. The North Andover Youth Baseball, $6,880. And then the North Andover Lacrosse Association, $3,850. So I'll hear a motion. Is there anyone here to represent us? Okay. So I'll hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next is an acceptance of a donation of $10,000 from the Brooks School for the Kittredge School Gymnasium Edition Project. Thank you, obviously, to the Brooks School. Anybody here to represent that?
Moved at the Board of Selectmen. Accept a donation from Brooks School in the amount of $10,000 to be used for the Kittredge School Gym Edition Project.
Second.
All in favor? I'm sorry. Go ahead, discussion.
Just, the only discussion is, is that I think it's really, really important that our community understands what incredible partners Brooks School is to us and has been for many, many years. They are true community partners and we are, we are lucky to have that school placed here.
Just so folks know, this is the second of three donations...
Yes.
...in the amount of $10,000 toward that project.
Yes.
Great.
Okay. And then, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is the acceptance of an MIA, MII, I'm sorry, MIIA grant of $1,850 for the safety training at the water treatment plant. What is the MIIA?
Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency.
We go to, we want to go to those sessions.
Yeah, I should have known that.
If you, if you have another A, take an eye out. You're in the Massachusetts Intercollegiate Athletic Association.
I know, that's where it was a little confusing there. Okay, so a donation of $1,850. Do I have a motion?
Moved at the Board of Selectmen. Accept the grant from MIIA in the amount of $1,850 for onsite safety training.
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you to the MIIA for that donation. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Next, moving right along, a request of David Foo to use Wire Hill Haze Skills Exchange Parking Lot, Reynolds Playground, and Johnson Street for filming a thesis. Do we have someone to represent? Why don't David? Why don't you tell us about your thesis and what your plans are and...
Sure thing. I'm a senior at NYU's Tisch School of the Arts. This is my thesis film. And I want to shoot my hometown.[1718.54] And I want to shoot my hometown. And the film is a murder mystery, basically. It concerns a girl who's sort of looking for the killer of her best friend. It's a little bit dark, but, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to shoot it here because I grew up here, you know, and this town means a lot to me. So it'd be really great to sort of be able to shoot at these really, sort of, these really nostalgic locations that I spent growing up in. And you have the locations, I believe. It's a.
So Wire Hill Hay Skills Exchange Parking Lot, Reynolds Playground, Johnson Street, on Johnson Street, yeah?
Yes.
Great.
I should mention that these are, these are very tentative, the schedule for them. You know, this is sort of a, a moving situation in the sense that if our actor's schedule changes or if we lock other locations, then that'll influence the dates that we shoot at the locations that I gave you. So, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see the dates on here. Are there actual dates?
Yeah, they're around.
Oh.
They're in here.
Oh, okay.
On his dates and times and stuff.
Well, it sounds exciting. Can't wait to see the, the film.
Yeah, you're the guy.
And I think I saw one correspondence from the Fire Department saying that they were.
Yeah, police is kind of important considering what you're doing.
I'm sorry?
The police.
Police approvals.
Of course, yes.
So you're going to have two detail ops.
I didn't see the details.
That was my question, yeah.
When, when David is in the public way, then they're requiring two detail ops. In places where they're not in the public way, that, that is an expectation.
David, I believe you met with the, a number of the merchants association.
I did, earlier this afternoon.
Yeah, some also remember. I apologize that I couldn't be there today from the board, but, great feedback. And, and I, I know that they are thrilled, and, you know, I am thrilled that, that you chose to come home to do this.
Yeah, me too.
Who's the victim?
Hopefully not an elected official.
No, 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 of course not.
Okay, so I will hear a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of David Foo to use Wire Hill and the Underpass Bridge on Friday, April 10th, 2015, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And on Sunday, April 12th, 2015, to close Johnson Street from Route 114 to Middle Road from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Use the Hay Skills Exchange Parking Lot from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And use Reynolds Playground from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. for filming his thesis.
Second.
Any discussion?
I should just mention that I'm planning on coming to the March 23rd meeting as well, just to finalize any sort of modifications I want to make between now and then. Great.
Any big-name actors or actresses?
Not quite.
Should we expect crowd control?
No, I couldn't get George Clooney, so I'm sorry.
That's all right. They got that new thing, and, you know, people give you money, and then you can get it distributed, right?
Yeah, exactly.
It's getting made. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you need any extras?
I do, actually. If you're interested, please send me an email.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You're all set, David. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
What about your thesis?
And everybody comes home.
All right, the next is a request from Eli Balin of Green Stride to use the streets in North Andover for the second annual Earth Rock Run Half Marathon. Eli, come on up.
Should I? I'm a little sick. Should I just kind of be here, not right there?
That's fine. Just introduce yourself and tell us about your event.
Sure, so Eli Balin. I have been here before, and so this event is the second annual. It was called the Earth Rock Run Half Marathon. Emphasize "half" because last year, you may remember, it was a half and a full. This year, I'm restructuring a little bit and just, just keeping with the half marathon. In terms of the course and everything that we had laid out last year, nothing's changing. Again, if you remember, that the full was really just a double loop of the half. So just requesting the same roads as, as what we did last year, which is starting and ending at, on Osgood off of Route 125 at Jimmy's Pizza. Parking will still remain the same over at Osgood Landing. And this year, last year, I, I did it where it was a week after Boston. This year, I pushed it back two, two weeks instead of one week for that first week in May, which I believe is May 3rd. That is the date that we're requesting. As far as last year went successfully, people loved the race itself. My numbers in total hovered right around this, somewhere between 6:30, 6:50 paid registrations, which is a little bit lower than I, than I anticipated. But, but actually, this year, my network has grown. There was a lot of good feedback from the race, so I'm actually already on a target to, to hit higher numbers. In total, with just the half marathon, let alone the full marathon as well. So, and as far as working with the city, that was awesome. Working with, you know, obviously, you guys, you know, love to have the race here, plus working with EJ Folds and the Fire Department. They all were fantastic, so it was a pleasure just to be able to come back here. And I think that the course itself, it's, it's a difficult one, and, but I, the reaction from a lot of the runners were sort of like, that was difficult, but that was beautiful. So people really liked it, and I think, you know, future years, it's going to be one of those races where people will sort of, you know, a lot of people reach a goal to want to just be able to run a half marathon. But I think you'll kind of eventually want to be like, oh, now I want to run that North Andover. Sort of like one of those things where it's like they know that there's a little bit of a toughness to it. And, and so, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Well, great, well, thank you. You certainly projected, so there was no issue with that with the microphone. So, all right, well, thank you for sharing that with us. Do I have a motion?
I have a question. Is it, I think last year, did you have the same weekend of the, the Youth Services fundraiser, is that?
Yes, last year was the same week. Another reason why I like to push it back. Because that, that's just not, it, it didn't really affect anything last year, but it's just easier to not have that happening. So that's why, that's another one of the reasons why it's a week later this year.
Very good.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? All right, you're all set, Eli. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Hope you feel better, too.
Thanks.
Welcome back.
Okay, next, I'd like to have Jacob Norris come up, and we're going to talk about your Eagle project and give us some information on that, and.
My name is Jacob Norris. I'm a Boy Scout in a Troop 87 North Andover. And I am currently working on my Eagle project. And my, what I'm planning on doing is building a shed for the North Andover baseball Little League program. I have handouts.
Shabby. It's a good choice. Very good choice. Good for him. It's good.
Did you design yourself also?
Jerry Gina Ricker involved, so.
Sure, that'd be helpful. The shed I'm planning on building would be a 12 by 10 shed with an eight-foot height. I want to build it at Appling Baseball Field. And I've talked with Mr. Rick Green, who works with the Little League program. And he, the, he says that the Little League program has, like, has okayed it. And so then I went to the town offices, and I met with Mr. Brown. And he, and I, we talked about a permit. And he says that, he said that I should come here to present, to get your approval for the permit. So the, this, so I went to Home Depot to design the shed. They have a software there that allowed me to design the shed. It would have, it would be 12 by 10 with a garage door.
It's great.
Good, yeah. So they, they'll be able to just store all their baseball.
So the current shed there, as you can kind of see, is pretty worn down and it's old. So they are in need of a new shed there.
Are you going to remove that old shed, Jacob?
I'm not going to remove it. I'm, the location of the shed would be like.
So this is in addition to?
Well, what they want to do with that shed is they want, the, they want to take it to move it to the middle school field, which, I don't know, he said something about like redoing the whole thing in a few years.
So Little League is going to take care of the old?
Yeah, they're going to take care of that.
Now, who's helping with the fundraising?
Well, I, when I went, when I met with Mr. Green, he said that the Little League program would be willing to donate some, a portion of the money. And then I was planning on, like, going around to local businesses, seeing if they would support me in building the project.
And, and your, your troop is helping you build it all as part of your? Okay, the most important question from a mother of two Eagle Scouts, when's your birthday?
It's April 21st, but right now, I'm only 15, so.
Oh, oh, you're.
It's got three years plus.
You're, you're older than you look. You scared me there for a moment.
She thought the window was very small to get this done.
Good for you. Good for you. Yes, you know, you're a scout and yours.
So another group you may want to approach is the Fields Committee, the one that we just accepted a rather large donation to tonight. They, you know, may be interested in this project also and maybe have some funds. Well, good luck with that. And so do we have a motion from the Board?
Mr. Chairman, move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of Jacob Norris to remove the existing storage shed and build a new 12 by 10 by 8 storage shed at Appling Field for his Boy Scout Eagle project and waive any building permit fees if required.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you for doing it.
Good luck.
Good luck, Mom, for getting it done on time. You will.
He's got three years to get it done.
Yeah.
He can relax.
He can chill. It's the other ones who are.
Come back when you get your Eagle Award. We'd like to recognize you again then. That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an appointment tonight to the North Andover Sustainability Committee, Shoba Dauntie. I have a motion. Is Shoba here? No, okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your service. Okay, good. Next, we have four requests from Columbia Gas of Massachusetts for some work to be done. Do we have a, I believe we have a representative from Columbia Gas tonight? Just come up and give us your name and let us know what you guys will be doing.
How you doing? My name is Jeff Fullit. Columbia Gas Construction Specialist. We're going to be doing replacement of our priority pipe that's in the ground, just to help us maintain that.
When are you going to be doing this?
When the roads open up, April 1st, we plan to start hitting the roads and getting where we can.
Are all four going to happen at the same time, or are you going to move from one to the other deal? Do you know yet?
Yeah, well, no, they won't happen at the same time for probably about two, two projects at a time.
Okay.
How long will the roads be opened up, you know, how long is it, from the time you start digging to your backfill, is it a day, kind of?
Per service or actual main, you're talking full project duration? Full project duration right now, rough, for each street, rough estimated. Probably about a week, full, as far as like the four petitions, full total, between 20 to 40 days for each project that we'll be going to.
Each of these requests, for instance, the first request in your package is 1,410 feet.
Yes.
So we talked about the service mains. You suggested that I approve the service mains, and for those which are new, replacement of existing infrastructure, bring those back to the board. So, so if you look in your packages, the four requests are substantial in terms of, of size. The second request is 425 feet. You know, these are, these are substantial installs. So it'll take a while, yeah. So during the install, will the residents be without gas service, or?
Yeah, temporary. Well, when we're doing the main, no. But when we do do the individual services, there is a brief period where there will, where there will be a gas loss while we do the changeover.
Couple hours.
Yeah, it's, it's half day. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not days or anything.
And obviously, they'll be notified well in advance, so if they can make the.
Yes, we have communications going out right now for all of that, postcards and letters in the mail. And when it comes to us actually doing that service, we have inspectors on each project that'll be able to go house to house and, you know, get contact information and set up, you know, that, days that are better for each customer.
Should we do this all as one, or as it is in the gender, as individuals?
You can do the motions.
Move that the. There's one, okay. Move that the Board of Selectmen approve, subject to the conditions of the Department of Public Works, the request of Columbia Gas Massachusetts to excavate Buckingham Road, Young Road, Putnam Road, Little Road, and Lyman Road for the purpose of expanding and or replacing its gas main. Should Dana, Colgate, Prescott, Moody, Ferber, Upland as well? Or should I do them individually?
You could, you could adopt the four requests provided by Columbia Gas, based on the applications that they've provided to the town, and then. Those are the only four we have.
Okay.
So adopt the applications.
I'm adopting the, I'm, it's what he said. I move. I move what Andrew said. Sorry.
You couldn't have said it better.
Rosemary's second.
Okay, so just so you know, you have at least two selectmen on these streets that you're going to be doing, so they're going.
Yes, you do.
They're going to be watching closely.
Yeah, well, actually, when this is done, I'm not going to be a selectman, so, you know, take some pressure. But I still like to be thought of.
Colgate Drive, we do it by picking each other, keep the noise down.
It's not 1950.
So, okay, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
No opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Okay, and then our town clerk, Mr. Bradshaw, will come up and tell us about the annual town meeting warrant. Citizens, I'm sorry, citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if I also could give a reminder about voter registration Wednesday night, 8 o'clock is the last date of register to vote for the town election. All right, we have two articles that have been submitted by citizen petition. One of them is to allow, by Celia DeSalvo, to allow 16-year-olds to be able to vote in town elections, which is a petition, the legislature article, and if it passes town meeting, we send it to the legislature for the consideration. And also to expand the liquor license quota for package stores, for a cork stop to be able to increase our quota so that they would be able to sell all alcoholic beverages, because we currently do not have any available. And that's.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion, or do we?
Yeah, move that the Board of Selectmen close the 2015 annual town meeting warrant for citizen petitions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Joyce. Okay, we'll now move into licensing. Do I have a motion?
Oh, I'm voting no, but go for her.
Do I have a motion for going into licensing? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in licensing. In licensing, the only thing we have before us this evening is Theodore Fossa from the Fossa Group looking for their common victual or an entertainment license to open Subway at Eaglewood Shopping Plaza. I'm actually quite excited. I love Subway. I saw the sign. Underneath Burton's and next to Title 1.
So if you could introduce yourself and.
Theodore Fossa, I'm the owner of the new Subway at 137 Turnpike Street. We just got our health permit today, so that is why I don't have food ready for you guys yet. That will become. But, yeah, I'm applying for the entertainment license for the TV. We're having just basic cable inside and background music in the store.
There's no.
No live music.
No, no, no. And there's no, in your, in your packets, there's, everybody is for it, no objections, all as well. Do I have a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
The only thing I would encourage you to do, because I have to, not because I have to, because, but we have a wonderful merchants association here in North Andover. www.northandovermerchants.org. Look them up. It's a great organization and a great way to get involved in the community.
Okay, all right.
When do you officially open?
Wednesday.
Super. Oh, great.
Huh? Uh, no, we didn't plan on it, no.
Well, you can plan on it. Get in touch with that merchants association. They'll give you a great grand opening.
Is this your first Subway, or?
Yeah, it's my first.
Your first? Good luck.
Great location. Good choice.
Thank you for choosing North Andover.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Forget the college kids. I'm going to be the. Good luck.
Thank you.
And welcome to town. Yeah, oh, yeah, right, me too. I, but I, Subway's not bad. You know? Can I have a motion to move out of licensing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are out of licensing.
Out of licensing, okay. Next on agenda, we have a public hearing. So it's a, regarding the removal of a shade tree on 288 Sutton Street. Do we have, need a motion to go into public?
Yes.
Okay, we, okay, so we need a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in a public, are public hearings open?
Where, where is this one? What is it?
It's Sutton Street.
Sutton Street's a big street, where? I believe someone's in the audience, maybe.
Oh, tell, tell them the whole story.
I was going to go there when these guys finished liberating.
Sorry. I don't know.
Just to keep it short. Representing Steve Smolak. The site at 288 Sutton Street is sort of, I guess, across, opposite from the area between Thorndike and Columbia on the airport side. And it's about a three, two and a three-quarter acre parcel of land that's being redeveloped for a five-lot subdivision.
Oh, yeah. Move approval.
Okay, we, all right, so I have a motion to close the hearing?
It's like our first night, I apologize.
Are there any questions from the Board or any kind of further?
Yeah, is, it's going up Sutton Street on the left-hand side? Correct. And there's a.
Where it's cleared now. Kind of.
Yes.
And is it, it's just one tree that's coming down?
Yeah, yes. Has come down.
It has come down.
It's already.
It has come down.
It was actually a dead tree.
Are you going to plant any new ones?
That's right. There are actually about 19 that are going into that subdivision.
Sounds good?
Aye.
Five, five, two families.
We need to get this, to live next to the airport noise, my God. They got me saying.
We do. Dem, deaf to it.
No, it's actually gotten better, the, the noise. We had the noise abatement plus the engines, as the engines.
No, no, I'm in a flight.
Get newer.
It's pretty loud.
It's not...
Yeah, that's true.
It's the older planes are put out to pasture.
It's like a new dishwasher as opposed to an old one.
Yeah.
And there's time restrictions.
No, I know.
And there's time restrictions that they can actually, there's certain times on the weekends.
But that's not, yeah.
Yeah, that's not...
No, I'm just curious, it's going to be one owner or you'll be selling them all? Are you selling like condenses?
Yeah, that's, that's the plan. There are five separate lots. There'll be a two-family on each of the five lots.
So ten sales or five sales?
Ten.
Yeah, that's my thought, okay.
So you've got some zoning board stuff to get through to, unless you're already done?
It's already, a couple of years ago it was completed, but just because of the economy. So let me just clarify, the, the tree that we're looking to is already down? Yes. It fell down or?
Yeah, fell down with a friend.
Well, technically. So it was cut down, it was cut down, it was cut down in error?
They went timber.
All right. The tree was, the tree was felt not realizing that it was in the public way and therefore... And this is a formality? This is a formality, yes.
But nineteen trees are going in. I'm with you on the trees, my tree friend.
I just, I just, no, I'm just, I just, no, I mean, it's gone, so it's a, it's a formality, so.
Yeah, it is a formality and...
Throw out some pictures if you'd like to.
It, it would have had to come down unfortunately anyway, but, and like you said, nineteen for one, so. Okay, so I'll have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now a motion to approve the removal of the shade tree?
Move.
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're good to go.
Thanks very much.
Okay, we have no old business, we have no new business, public comment. Only one person left in the audience. Stan, what do you got?
Stan Lumper, forty-three Stonely Road. I just wanted to add my thanks to Brook School for the money they've given us for the Kittredge Gymnasium. It's very thoughtful of them and I would echo Ms. Watson's comments. They are a good community member and always have been a good supporter. I also wanted to make my announcement. One of our robotics teams won the regional, were, were a finalist in the regional championship and will be going to the world finalist for their robotics competition.
Oh, that's cool.
In Louisville, Kentucky in April.
The world championship?
World championship. I think, I think world is probably Canada and Mexico, but I just say that, right? It's like the World Series, right, right? So, but I, we are very proud of them and we've come a long way in that program. So we, I always tell them they're emulating our wrestling program.
There we go.
Get good at this and keep it up. Pretty soon you become a powerhouse, so.
That's right.
They're getting there. I just wanted to let you guys know.
Thank you, Stan.
It's awesome. That's cool.
Okay.
Have you seen one of those things? They're pretty cool.
Yes, I've seen one.
They're very cool.
Saga Serena.
They beat each other up, right?
Yeah.
It's amazing that these young minds like put these crazy things together.
Okay, we'll move to the town manager's report. Ask the manager.
Other than the material provided, I would like to, if I can, advance that if anybody has any questions. Just thank the public works for, for surviving this winter. It was a particularly difficult winter. We had some, in the last three or four weeks or so, a number of water main breaks, which I know a number of communities are having, which are, it's not as, maybe not as painful to wash as the steel worker on top of the new fire station, but it's pretty painful to be out there at midnight at one AM and two AM in a hole in the middle of, you know, the dark and trying to get work done. So we appreciate both the work of the DPW and the patience, quite frankly, of the residents who, who were great, stopped and, and supported the DPW staff and, and recognized that, you know, there was a disruption in service, but sometimes that happens, so I'd like to thank them.
I got initial frantic calls and then I got calls praising them, so.
One, one, one quick question.
Yes.